Viewers, we apologize for the interruption. Bear with us this morning. Let me just remind you, we are sit, I'm sitting with Mr. Larry Paul, and we were just talking about him sitting as president of the Blackrock Village Council. And you said you have been president since 2010.
Yes.
According to the constitution of the Blackrock Village Council, how often is the elections held for the executive of the council?
Well, our elections are held yearly.
Okay.
And the only period we didn't have elections, as most village councils, was that period during Covid, that two-year period.
Right, right.
But after that, we held our elections and we're back running as normal.
Alright, so you had elections last year?
We had elections last year, in May last year.
Right, so you were retained as president?
And we have our elections again at the end of this month.
Okay.
Because the constitution says that, of course, you can have elections between that period, January to March, and the association gives an extension. Before this new constitution...
The association, as in the village council association of Tobago?
Yes, they could give you continuous extension.
Okay.
But they have a revised constitution of this year.
Yes.
Which says that you have, they give you a one-month extension.
Okay.
That's April.
So it must be held within that period after?
Yes, and we have had that.
Okay, so elections are coming up pretty soon for the village council?
Yes, and we function as normal.
Right.
And you know, the Blackrock Village Council have given to Tobago, see, Blackrock Village Council, I want to make the point that we have given to Tobago, one of the longest presidents of the Association of Village Councils, Mr. Sylvan Cookshank.
Right.
Who went on to get a national award because of his service in village council and community council. He came from Blackrock. He is also the president of the Blackrock Village Council.
Right, very well, so we have some history there, viewers. And Mr. Paul, we know that time is going, and I know, I want to get into that issue that is playing off in the public between the Secretary of Community Development, Assemblyman Terrence Baines, and of course, what you have been saying in the public light as well. From your perspective, where do you think an error may have occurred? For viewers who have not been up to speed, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that central government approached the village council to use the facility, and, but apparently, there was... Well, I should allow you to say it.
Yes.
So that I would not give any mixed information.
Thank you again, no. So the Blackrock Village Council came into prominence in the public domain based on statements made by the Honorable Secretary, Mr. Terrence Baines, indicating that the Blackrock Village Council forces default, that Larry Paul is running an illegal operation and have no responsibility or no authority to hold keys.
But on what grounds would he have said that, though? Because you're saying that you'll have been having elections. How would the secretary been advised otherwise then?
Well, you understand my confusion, and that's why I gave clarity.
Okay.
And I told you, we had elections in May of 2023, and of course, his representative, or representative of the community development, would have also been at that elections.
Okay.
So I think it was ill-advised, I think it was a bit of emotion, and I couldn't understand, because the Blackrock Village Council, you know, the secretary, you know?
Right.
We have always cooperated, we have dialogue all the time, and we couldn't understand, before you go and make those public outbursts, talk to us, we have an irrepresentative who's always talking to us, always in dialogue, so we find it strange, and I couldn't understand where the secretary was going with that.
Right.
So he said all those things, and I just reminded you that we had our elections, so that statement was incorrect. We are properly constituted and we are not default. And of course, based on our early beginnings, we have always held the keys for the centre.
Right.
We have always collaborated, this is not the first time that we collaborated with the ministry, and in our constitution of the Association of Village Councils, I work with it, you know? I go to read just one part, it says, here, just quickly.
Sure.
Taking two minutes, it says, aiming objectives. It says, the village council is supposed to cooperate with government and other agencies in the promotion of community development activities aimed at improving the life in the community.
Right.
That's exactly what we are doing.
But some of the issues arising out of this, if I may call it misunderstanding, would be the use of the facility which falls under the remit of the Tobago House of Assembly. Right, yes, the village councils are put in place, but we know that the THA Act provides powers for the THA divisions to control and have that remit over some of the resources here, right? So if I want to say the box tops with them in terms of usage, though you may have committees or individuals managing these facilities, right? So I just want, I want us to be clear on that, and as you said, your constitution, of course, allows you to engage with organizations and institutions, bringing in programs to benefit your community, and that is obvious. One of the things coming out of it, and you can shed light on it, is that there's a duplication of the training programs, because that's one of the issues that seem to have some contention, where THA through COMDEV is providing their vocational program, and certain programs are being done, and then the Ministry of Sport and Community Development also is providing programs, or wants to provide programs at the said facility, and there seems to be a duplication. Clarify that for us.
Let me just bring some clarity based on what you said. Now, the Blackrock complex, Blackrock Regional Multipurpose Complex is unique. It's only one of its kind in Tobago. So I want to give you the genesis very quickly, that very early, the Blackrock Village Council had its own centre on its own land, donated to the community, so we built that, community built that. And then somewhere in 1995, this opportunity came for a regional multipurpose complex. They were building four in Trinidad, four, so that they had three in Trinidad, and of course, due to the advocacy of Mr. Stanford Kalender, who was in Parliament, and Patrick Manningham was the Prime Minister, advocate to get one in Tobago, and that's how we got that facility. The village council then were in negotiations, we are giving up what we sweat and worked for, what are we getting in return? So that in their management structure, the village council always came into the management. So the set is, it was built, and it was built in negotiation with Ms. Beverly Ramsay-Moore, who was the secretary of the village council, and also the secretary of community development.
Right.
And she played a major role, because when it came to Tobago, of course, THA wanted it elsewhere, and she said it must be in Blackrock. And that's where we started. Now, the village council said that we're not giving up that for nothing, we must be involved in the management. So in that negotiation, as I said, negotiation, in that negotiation with the village council, they said we're going to establish a board to manage the centre.
Right.
And the chairman of the board will be the president of the village council or the village council representative. So from the inception of that centre, the village council managed it, and we managed it up until today. So when the board would have expired, the last board, it was 2010, they're about, when there are more multipurpose complexes in the community, the THA then, through the one of the secretaries, indicated they wanted to expand the role or look for, look at different permutations that might suit what exists now. So there's several discussions taking place in terms of expanding the role, wanting the board to look at all the facilities in the community, the Heritage Park and all of that. And as I mentioned, Heritage Park, just quickly, it is the Blackrock Village Council who, led by me, created that Heritage Park that we all enjoy.
Right.
So I'm saying that, so come back to now, indicating that was what our management structure.
Right.
So the chairman of the board was the president of the Blackrock Village Council or the representative of the village council.
Right.
And there was a line item coming from central government, multipurpose complexes that will fund the centre. So that was where the funding came from.
Right, let me ask.
Just quickly, I want to show you quickly, so I wouldn't lose the point. So when we did our estimates, we would have had, one, as it says there, current transfers and subsidies.
Right.
Two, nonprofit organization, three, 16 regional complexes. So that's how the funding start, that's where the management started. And after the board expired, then of course, the village council continued the management of the centre to the interest of all.
Right, and most of the village councils on the island do have a part to play in how they run their community centres or multipurpose centres and all the various names we give it. And I know at some point in a past regime, you had coordinators who were hired.
Let me just jump in there very quickly.
Just a minute, to manage some of these facilities as well, and there's a switch back to the community saying, hey, this belongs to us as well. So I know you're saying that Blackrock seems unique, but I think it's a thrust across the island. But I want us to get back to the point.
We made a point, I wanted, I had to correct that point.
Right.
So that in the past regime, there were multipurpose, where the decision was made to have, we call that coordinators in the centres. And there are some village councils that, as we know, couldn't manage their facilities.
Right.
So that is where that came in, because some keys, some persons, based on your political persuasions, or who you like, may have kept the keys and so on.
Right.
That never happened in Blackrock. And when that came about, I represented Blackrock then, you know?
Right.
And I said, Blackrock would not be a part of that, and there are some communities have not been involved in that. You have the More Pleasants and Blackrock, I think they're the only two most prominent ones in terms of management of their facilities.
Right.
That has not changed.
Right.
So, because of that, we have partnered with WITUP, we have partnered with ministries before. It's not the first time, you know, ministers, it's not the first time, we've partnered before. We have had several programs at the centre. And because we have never had, from 63 to now, we have never once had to ask approval from community development for the use, for anyone to use the centre.
Right.
So we are saying, if there's a change or you feel otherwise, you could have a conversation, that's the point I'm making, you know?
Right.
Because it never happened before.
But I know you said you were called into a meeting, I think you met the administrator. So did that meeting not facilitate this discussion?
Well, that meeting was, we were to give instruction, that was a different meeting.
Okay.
So that meeting started when the classes on the centre started.
Right.
And of course, there are two sets, one week and one during the week and one on the weekends. So at some point in that time, just at the same week the class started, the administrator would have called, indicating that she had to go to work, that, just as you said earlier, the ministry having classes at the centre. And they have the full view that the village council were putting out, in other words, or, however I want to put it, they were displacing
Right.
classes held by the community development.
I want us just to pause there, because I want, I want, I want the answers to the questions, right? So was there a duplication in terms of what was to be proposed by the ministry as opposed to the division? Because you are in charge, and I mean, you talk about the management and you all are, you know, on part, what's happening. So was there a duplication?
No, I will say no.
You will say, okay.
No, right.
And in terms, just now, Mr. Paul. I know, but hold on, because remember, we want to follow. You have been in the social media space, so has the secretary, and this morning it's about...
Clarity.
Also giving us some kind of clarity for those who want to understand what's really going on. Right, because even myself, so I'm asking the questions, so chart the process. And in terms of not having that duplication, walk us through the space. Is it that you can have simultaneous programs going on? If you have a class teaching in here, another class can happen, is there enough parking space? You know, that kind of arrangement to facilitate, let's just say, if the two parties are to say, yes, go ahead, can the facility, you know, accommodate that?
Right, so, and that's just what I'm, that's the case. What you said is exactly the case.
So can the facility accommodate that?
So that...
The answer is yes?
The answer is yes.
Okay.
So we had a village council meeting there on Monday, at the centre, and there was a birthday party at the centre.
Right.
Same time.
Okay.
So that, because we have the main hall, and I made a point earlier on another media, that whenever they, if they had two activities or whatever happening at the same time, and the division having any activity of function or want the use of the centre, they always get priority of the main hall. That has always been the case, that has not changed, and it did not change.
Right.
And anything that's happening will happen in auxiliary offices at the back and at the side. And we have many of those.
Right, and in terms of using that space, a meeting versus a birthday party, different types of events, but in terms of having classes at the same time, right? Because I just want to get that understanding, if you have tutors, is it that where the other rooms are, you can't hear what's going on in the main hall and vice versa?
Well, that's why I made the example of the birthday party, a birthday party will have...
No, yes.
Right?
Yeah.
And we had a successful meeting there.
Right, but that was like a one-off as well, but for it to be sustained...
So the classes, let me just clarify, so the COMDEV classes took place
Right.
in the main hall.
Right.
And one of the days, is one of the classes which starts at 3:00 and it will end at 5:00. And the COMDEV classes will start, I think it was 5:00 and end at 8:00.
Okay.
So that, so that it went on, one in the auxiliary office and one in the main hall. And there was no clashing, there's no disturbance, there was nothing, because it wasn't unusual. So I think because of the misinformation and the perception that if something happening at the same time, or there's a little one-hour layover, then there will be some displacement or something, that was never the case.
Right.
So that is why there was never the case, it never happened before, and we are responsible. We are not irresponsible, and we are saying that the two classes that they held, in terms of those classes, were fully subscribed. So I'm saying, if you have a choice to train 20 and you change to train 40, of course we'll train 40, because it's better for all Tobagoan or interests is developing the community and of Tobago.
Okay, and, and again, from what is being said, what has been said by you, by the minister, by the secretary?
I've been consistent, yeah.
The issue, and I'm sure everybody can claim that they have been consistent, the issue, and I like the point you raised, where, okay, maybe more people can benefit, et cetera. But now I want to look in terms of the jurisdiction. So we know there has always been a tug and pull in terms of central government versus THA, right? The THA Act would outline the powers of the Tobago House of Assembly, one being for the division of COMDEV to, I don't want to... And maybe I might use the wrong language, so forgive me, right? To take ownership, to take control of these facilities. Yes, they may be managed by a village council, they may have a coordinator, they may have whoever, right? Because we know the purpose of these buildings, it's for the community to have programs, et cetera. But in terms of what the THA Act defines, the powers of the Tobago House of Assembly and its divisions, to take ownership, to manage these facilities, isn't the THA within, within line or within their powers to say, hey, if it is central government wants to come and do something, we need to give the okay, because it's not, it's, it's, it's within our power in terms of this is, this is ours? So help me understand that, because we, this is not the first time this will play off, right? We have had when in, when Mr. London was the secretary of the Tobago House, I mean, you saw how...
I don't want to go there, because I have the village council.
No, I know, but I'm just...
There's a level higher than that, I'm not going there.
No, 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 let me finish, make the point, because I don't think you know where I'm going.
Right.
We're talking about a separation of powers. So I understand where you are in terms of the village council, and I mean, you have been saying that the secretary or whoever may have been misinformed, and it's the first time that you're seeing this in terms of being told you cannot have, or the village council doesn't have that authority to give another entity, you know, that power. So in terms of that, I'm just, based on what has happened before, I have seen where Mr. London, who, when he was in power as secretary, would have...
I don't want you to go there, I don't want you to go there.
I know, let me know, I have to go, because I am understanding the powers of division. Where you had then Prime Minister Kamala Posad-Bissaka doing something in Tobago, and he was quite vocal in saying...
No, I know, I know, you're confusing, no, 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 no.
Mr. Paul, allow me, allow me, all people are listening, they want to hear you, they want to hear me, right? In terms of protecting the powers of the Tobago House of Assembly and making sure central government doesn't encroach on the THA Act. So that's where I'm going. So in terms of you having your constitution, your mandate as president of the village council, right? Then THA also has to protect their, their entity or however they may see it. So in listening to what you have said and the secretary and the minister, because to be honest, everybody will hold their end, Mr. Paul. You will say, this is it, the secretary will say, this is it, and the minister will say, this is it. It's up to us now in the public to listen to everybody and pick out really some of the facts, and that, that is why we are here, that is why I am here, not to make a judgment, but to provide some kind of understanding in what's going on, because everybody has something to say, and you think you are right, and you may be right. I am not to say, so I am just asking as a person in Tobago, living in this, in this island, right? So for me, and for some of those who are listening, this is not new in terms of THA protecting, for want of a better expression, it's still fun saying, hey, if central government wants to come in and use our facility, it has, and you will, I will allow you to, you have to pass through us. So I'm asking if something, if that is wrong, because you are in the politics, you are, you know, more rest than me.
Right, you see, I wear two hats, and I want to state firmly that I'm not mixing politics with village council.
Right, okay.
And I, our Blackrock Village Council will not be drawn into the politics.
Right.
We deal with village council business, THA and minister, different level, we're not getting involved in that.
Right.
So we deal at village council level, that's where I was going.
Right.
So that if there are an issue with the government and the THA, the minister and the secretary at the level, deal with that.
Right.
Don't bring the village council into that, and we're in a hat at all.
Okay.
And I resist that with all the steam in my body.
Okay.
So that is why, because all village council have all persons in there, different political persuasion, never once we get into the politics.
Right.
That's why I tell the secretary, don't bring us into the politics. If there's a problem, and you outline along what happened, we now at village council, we are not getting involved in that.
Okay.
Or it doesn't go there at all, nowhere.
Right.
And that is why I'm saying, don't bring us into politics.
Okay.
Because that's where we'll destroy our village councils. And persons are saying that, you know, they're trying to get the village council in politics. We are resisting that, our village council will not get into the politics. So the discussion you outlined there, that's a different discussion at all when I have a political hat, but when village council hat, we're not getting involved in that village council. We have a role to play, and you come, we partner with different agencies and so on. And if for some reason, the secretary at that level
Right.
realised that, listen, something is wrong, talk to us, we are open.
Right.
As I said before, he also has a conduit, because we are in close communication with our irrepresentative, Mr. Niall George.
Right.
He comes to village council meetings, he was at our house function, was saying, there is never, there's never time we have this antagonistic relationship. So if he finds something was wrong, there are avenues he can use rather than just say, I take him back the keys.
Okay.
How could that be right?
Okay, right, so, and, and that's why we, you are here, right, to share with us. And, and my point wasn't, and I know we have to go to our break, but I just want to clarify, because I don't think you understood me bringing that comparison. Not the politics, I don't like it, I'm not making a political point. I'm just looking at THA, the powers of the Tobago House of Assembly that has to govern this island and what has happened in the past. So it's not, I don't think that was, but I don't know if you're saying that is political when Mr. London was telling the prime, then Prime Minister, you know, don't encroach on THA. I don't, I don't know if you're saying that is political, but I'm not making that a political point. I'm just seeing the second, the chief secretary doing his job in terms of protecting THA and the institution that it, that it is. You know, and I'm seeing that similarity here now, but not, I'm not making a political point. So I just want that to be very clear.
I think there's two different things, you know?
But, but we can agree to disagree, but we have to go to our break, viewers, and we'll continue our conversation with Mr. Paul. Welcome back, viewers, thank you for staying with us, and we continue our conversation with Mr. Paul this morning. Before we switch gears into discussing the Tobago Council of the People's National Movement, internal elections, Mr. Paul, I would just like you to, because this, for me, this can be a never-ending issue, right? It can end, but it can be if we bring all the different entities and everybody has, you know, their, their different opinions, and everybody has that right as well. But as a person from the community, as the president of the village council, what do you think should be the way forward? How would you like this now to come to an, an end?
Well, thank you, very good question, because we met as village council on Monday.
Right.
And the villagers indicated that the way forward should have, we had discussions. Let us discuss with our irrepresentative, bring it to his attention, of course he's away, let him know what we spoke about. So I took the liberty, I called irrepresentative, as normal, it's a normal thing.
Yes.
And let him know what the villagers indicated. He said he will discuss it, he did discuss it with his secretary, and his chief secretary indicated that he would deal with the matter. My understanding of that is that the status quo will continue. He will come to our next village council meeting, we will bring clarity. We have always, as a community, always collaborate, always discuss, and we are saying we'll continue those discussions, because there's nothing unusual what we have been doing. And if you feel that is a change or you want to have a little shift, we are saying we're open to discussions. But we're also saying that we are defending our community at all costs, but we are also open for discussion and negotiation, and that is how it should be.
And as you said, you know, it's amazing how our minds can trigger memories. You said, as you said that, you're defending your village council. I remember one of the PNM's former campaign in defence of Tobago, and it's about protecting what THA has control over. So let's switch gears now, let's switch gears, Mr. Paul, right?
Thank you very much.
You were sitting in a neutral position as president of the village council. Now we've switched to the political side of you as chairman of the Tobago Council of the People's National Movement. Internal elections is up. Now, in my mind, when I heard that, I was like, didn't they just have internal elections? So walk us through, I understand, there's a four-year position, two-year position. Walk us through that process in terms of which election is going to be held.
So we had elections in 2022.
Right.
And so we have 17 positions on the executive.
Right.
So we have four of those positions, have four-year positions, and the others are two-year positions. So the elections we're having this year is for those for the two-year positions.
Okay.
And that election will be held on the 27th and on the 28th of April. That's Saturday and Sunday coming.
Right.
Saturday is whole day, that will take place from 8:00 in the morning until 6:00 in the afternoon at four different locations.
Okay.
So we have one of our voting stations at Moriah Multipurpose Complex. We have the other one at Kanan Community Centre, and then we have now at Scarborough, which are the People's National Movement Tobago Council's office.
Right.
And we also have another station at the Belgarden Multipurpose Facility.
So those are your voting stations?
Those are voting stations.
And it's all day?
And it's all day on Saturday.
Right, 8:00 AM?
8:00 AM to 6:00. Yeah, and once you are a registered member of the party, you can vote.
Right.
And also on Sunday, which is our special convention to introduce our new executive and also to discuss the party's platform.
Okay.
That's happened on Sunday, you can vote now from 9:00 in the morning to 2:00.
Okay.
And our convention starts at 4 o'clock.
Okay.
And that will happen at the Caroline Building upstairs city post in Scarborough.
So the voting at the same locations on Sunday?
No, all, so Sunday is only one.
Right, Saturday, it's the four locations, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
That's correct.
And Sunday, you have one location, which will be?
Caroline Building.
Oh, same place of the convention, Caroline Building, very well.
Upstairs city post.
Right, so let's talk about which positions are up for grabs.
Yes, so let me just tell you quickly
Yes.
which positions are up for, for grabs. So I'll go through them very, very quickly. So we have first the lady vice chairman. So, so let me carry it up first, in this, in this election.
Yes.
Some persons went back on a poll, so there are only four positions
Okay.
will be contested this weekend.
Okay.
But I just tell you all the positions that are for grabs, just quickly. So the lady vice chairman, we have a new posting that position, and she's on a poll. So you now have the treasurer, that is one of the positions that are up for grabs on, on Sunday. Elections officer is another position for grabs this weekend.
Right.
And you have the youth officer is also for grabs, and the education officer.
Okay.
Those are the four positions. So going back, that are on a poll, so you now have the assistant general secretary, the public relations officer, the research officer, the welfare officer, the field officer, the operations officer, labour officer, but of course, youth officer is also being contended again this year. So it's 17 positions, and...
But some are safe.
Some are, very, very safe. And it could only tell you that some persons felt that they're satisfied with those persons who have served.
Right.
And then you have some new persons who are coming on. I think it's a very healthy part of democracy under the People's National Movement. And we are encouraging persons, once you are a registered member, come out, because you see, this is a base of a democracy, where you have a chance to elect persons that you want to serve as your executive in the party.
Right, and if necessary, change needs to happen, you make that change. Right, and if necessary, change needs to happen, you make that change. So for those of you who are members of the P N M, you come out, as Mr. Larry is saying, exercise your franchise, it doesn't matter on what level, this is your elections. Come out, let your voice be heard, and, you know, select the candidate you think can get the job done.
Yeah.
What goes on in your convention? So you have a convention on Sunday, what's the purpose of that convention?
Right, so it's a special convention, where, where you have all your members of your party group, or your different arms of the party, we come together. We just came out of that internal elections.
Right.
So at that, then you're going to announce the new executive.
Okay.
They're going to be introduced and inducted one time, because they are now going to take us into the next term. And after that, we have some motions, the person bring motions that you want to see to take to our national convention.
Right.
But most importantly, our party's platform, which is our main focus, which is our vision that for Tobago, where we want to tell you what is the People's National Movement will do in terms of tourism, what's our thoughts on agriculture. So that's the party's platform, we are going to bring it to the membership.
Right.
They're going to go through it, and of course, we ask them to, to, we're going to vote and ensure that we are in agreement, that is the way forward.
Right.
And of course, before that, it will come to our convention, sorry, our council meeting today.
Okay.
It's going to be approved by, by the council.
Right.
And then go to the convention.
Right, um what time is the convention on Sunday?
Convention is from four to eight.
Okay, so voting on the Sundays from nine AM to one PM, so it's from, to two, right, so let me not get that.
Nine to two.
Nine to two on Sunday, and your convention begins at four. So is it that you announce who would have won, though, from that voting, Saturday and Sunday, you present?
Full executive.
Okay, got you.
Presents to the public, and of course, those who are there will see, and see that these are, these are your new executives.
Okay.
Persons ready, willing and able to take the party forward.
And they will be inducted, as you said, and, and all the different formalities, et cetera.
And of course, we are in a high come out of, of all our workabouts and our meetings, and our interaction with the people, giving hope to persons and so on.
Right.
So we expect a full house, as usual, and good interaction.
Right.
We're telling people, come out, continue, the People's National Movement is there for you.
Right.
We are in a position, we are doing our work, we are doing our strategic plan, so that our strategic plan, of course, is what we're going to talk about next, and our vision for Tobago and taking Tobago forward.
And, and just to clarify for viewers, this election is for registered members of the party, you know how we are here, so somebody will come and say, why does vote for them every election and whatever, why I can't vote here, that kind of thing. But how do you become a registered member of the People's National Movement?
Right, so through our party groups, we meet persons on, on the, on the road, or persons will come to the P M office in Scarborough Tobago Council's office.
Right.
I want to join the P N M, because I'm excited about your party.
Right.
They fill up a form, so that they are a commander, they sign it, they take it to the membership committee, and then you say, okay, you're a registered member, you're not on a membership list, we have your information, we call you, and then, of course, you have a party card.
Right, okay, so once you have that, you are legit.
Yes, and some persons, of course, are not getting their party card.
Yes.
But once you have been registered.
Okay.
Once you have made out that form.
Yes.
And register, and we say you are approved, then you are a registered member of the party.
Right, so those of you who belong to the P N M um political group, now is your time to ensure that internally things are organized and you have your voice, you come out and vote. Tell us the importance of taking part in an exercise like this, because our time, of course, is running fast, Mr. Paul. Because sometimes, even just on, even on a national level, you hear people, they talk, talk, but when it's time to vote, nothing, they don't go and exercise their franchise. How important is this for the members of this political party to come out and exercise that franchise on Saturday and Sunday?
Yeah, because you, you have a chance to have your voice be heard, so you can have a chance of vote who you want in office.
Right.
Because if you don't vote, you can't talk after, because the chance was there.
Right.
So this is a whole mark of a democracy, where one man or one vote, you can vote for the persons you want to see to take your executive forward. If you were saying, listen, treasure is open, you have two candidates, so I want this one, because I think he's better able to give us what, what we want in the party, so persons should come out and vote, come out and support your candidate and let your voice be heard, which is the important thing, because you can't cry if you didn't, if you did not contribute.
Right.
Let your voice be heard.
Right.
It's the same thing in national context, when it comes to voting, you can't stay home, let your voice be heard.
Correct.
No matter who you vote for, of course, I would say vote for the P N M.
Right, I understand that.
Oh, I'm saying, come out and vote, it's your democratic right.
Yes.
Because persons fought for that, that you can have that right to vote.
And as you say, if you don't vote and then you're calling about everything, you need to stay quiet, you had a chance, right? And how, how do you then know your members, as you say, somebody will win, somebody would lose, right? Um, how do you move on now as a group, as a political group, where some of your members kind of feel, well, my side they win or my person they win? What, what, how do you deal with that individual or groups of individuals or a party group who supported person A?
Yes.
And that person didn't make it?
Well, well, you know, it's no secret that the P N M itself.
Right.
Because we are small, neat society, that we had our challenges when it comes to internal elections, that's no secret.
Right.
So we are now, of course, doing reconciliation, talking to those who are followers, because if we are good friends and um somewhere, and you know, we're voting, and your side wins, and might say, people get, we should have voted for me, and that kind of thing, and a hole or corner, and we're talking to each other and so on, what we are saying is part of our democracy, somebody must win and somebody must lose.
Most definitely.
It's first not to coalesce as one, because the whole, together we aspire, together we achieve, and the chain is as weak as what, as strong as the weakest link.
Yes.
So I'm saying, you can't fall to be a weak link.
Right.
You have, we have to be strong, and in fact, in most small societies, you have that problem, you know.
Right.
In terms of the maturity to understand the concept of internal elections, one man, one vote.
Right.
Before just delegate system.
Yes.
When it's open up.
Yes.
And we are trying now to ensure that after elections, we meet, we have interaction with persons, we go to the party group, we have reconciliation efforts, we have a little togetherness games and, so we can come together.
Yes.
We always have that.
All right, so as we close this morning, I want you, Mr. Paul, to speak to the members of your party and rally them and get them to come out on Saturday and Sunday.
Yes, so of course, to all the members of the People's National Movement, we ask you to come out, come out and support the candidate of your choice. Come out and make your voice be heard for elections on the twenty-seventh, four stations, and on the twenty-eighth upstairs Caroline Building, Wilson Road, from nine to two, see you there.
All right, viewers, so those of you who are concerned with that, you have the information. Remember as well, our first interview this morning, the S C A Brain Cooler at T H T I, for those of you who are interested, there is still time to register your, your child and get them involved in that beautiful experience. So thank you for staying with us this morning, I am Natalie C D Richardson, it's always a pleasure to spend my morning with you, so until next time, just keep viewing Tobago Updates.